Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the School District of the City of Dearborn special meeting on, what is today? April 8th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Hussein Barry.
Here.
Mary Lane.
Here.
Roxanne McDonald.
Here.
Michael Mead.
Here.
James Thorpe. Here. President Petlicov.
Here. I would like to call to the podium before we begin this meeting our legal counsel, Mr. Tim Courier, who's going to explain tonight's process for everyone so that we all have an understanding of what's going to take place tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. The manner in which the vacancy is filled for board members set forth in the policies of the Dearborn Public Schools that have been established during a number of periods of years. There are several policies involved, but I'm not going to go through all of them because not all of them are relevant for tonight. The first and foremost requirement is in policy 142.2, "To be qualified to be on the Board of Education, an individual is eligible for election as a school board member if the individual is a citizen of the United States and is qualified and registered elector of the school district by the filing deadline." So that's the first and foremost qualifications. They have to be elector of this district and a citizen of the United States. Vacancies occurred in a number of ways. In this particular circumstance, the vacancy occurred due to an incumbent's resignation. If less than a majority of the decisions of the Board of Education become vacant, the remaining other members of the Board shall fill the vacancy immediately, but requires a majority of the Board to vote, which means four votes have to be cast to appoint a new board member. If his vacancy is not filled within 30 days, then the Board of the intermediate school district, in this case Wayne County RISA, shall fill the vacancy by appointment. Just by way of contrast, if a majority of the Board had resigned, so you could not have a majority vote, it would immediately go to a special election within 30 days. In filling the Board's vacancy, the Board shall seek qualified and interested candidates from the community through the news media, word of mouth, and contact with appropriate organizations. All active concerned should submit a notice of interest in writing to the Board President. The Board shall interview all interested candidates who have sustained their qualifications. Appointment by the Board to fill the vacancy shall be by a majority vote of the full Board. Now, a question has been raised about the interview process. I know the interviews have already been held. You're required to offer an opportunity for the interview. You can't require somebody to interview if they don't want to come to it. It's just that it's an opportunity to do so. With respect to voting, unless specifically authorized by Michigan Conflict of Interest laws, any Board's members' decision to abstain shall be recorded and deemed to be acquiescent in the action taken by the majority. Failure to vote, absent a statutory exception, constitutes a breach of the Board's members' duty as a public official. In situations in which there is a tie vote, the abstention represents the deciding vote. Does not represent the deciding vote because the motion fails for a lack of a majority. So if you have a situation where you have three votes versus two votes versus one vote, there's no action. Three votes, two votes, and somebody abstains without a statutory conflict of interest, that one vote gets counted with the majority. It's not the carrying majority, but it's the three votes. It feels a little bit like Brown Hog Day right now.
It does.
But that's just a reminder. That's the general process that you should go through. The Board President is in charge of conducting the meeting and can ask the Board members to... We have no specific procedures of how you get these people nominated or elected, so you're on your own on that one. And I'll be staying here if you need any guidance to give you some assistance.
I do have one question or clarification for everyone. If someone nominates a candidate, that does not need a second.
No, nomination of a candidate does not need a second.
Does not need a second. I just wanted to make it clear to everyone. You can nominate, you do not need to have a second to move that nomination forward.
If I understand it under Robert's rules procedure that you have adopted where you have holes in the bylaws and policies, you're allowed to nominate one person. You can't nominate two. So, Madam President, you can't nominate two candidates, you're only going to nominate one.
At each time, for each motion.
Right.
Yes, okay. Yes, thank you.
Anything further? Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
Yes.
The first round, though, we are not going to put forth, we're each going to throw out one name, and then if there's four, that will go to a nomination.
Is that... That's what we decided at Thursday's meeting, and I do have the unapproved minutes from that meeting, and that's what was stated then as well, that the first round, what I'm going to ask you all to do after we hear from the citizen participation portion is everybody can first have, lay on the table their thought processes for what they think makes a good board member, why they're looking for certain qualifications for a board member. After that discussion, then I'm going to question each board member to put forward their first choice. David Mustedin will keep track on Google Doc so everybody can see the names as they are selected by each one of us. At the time that you put forward your name, that's the time to give your argument or your discussion as to why you've chosen that individual to put forth. Once we have done that, if we see that there has been the same name chosen four times, I will call for a motion then. At any time, someone can put forward a motion. I can't prevent that once, after we've done this first round and put a name out there for a vote. But we could be here a long time if we're just continuously putting forward names, so I'd like to keep this as orderly as possible when we move forward with suggesting motions for approval.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, finish your question.
I just have another clarification on that original point. My understanding is when we're bringing our initial discussion, we can put forth a name or more than one name as to why... I mean, not bring it forward, just, these are the things I'm looking at, and I believe this particular person has those qualities.
If you so choose, I mean, it's your discussion. Everybody can handle their conversation about why they're thinking the way they're thinking.
Okay.
But that will not be... I will specifically ask each of you individually to bring forward a name. So the initial discussion will not be anything more than a discussion. Trustee Barry?
From what I understood, and correct me if I'm wrong, the other night is after the first round, let's call it first round, if we don't get, you know, a direction or four names, you know, same name four times, we're going to continue that process? Are we...
Well, that's why I asked for it to do ranking.
Just so on the same page, from what I understand from last week, we said yes.
Yes.
We agreed that it was yes.
That is my understanding.
But I also understand that, you know, anyone can bring a motion at any time.
Right.
But I remember the discussion we had is we were...
We'll start with the first round. Each time, if we don't come to a majority vote on the name put forward, then we either revisit the name and we can have more discussion on that original nomination and then try again, or people bring forward a different name.
But that name is not thrown out of the mix.
No.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
No. I said, you can bring forward a different name.
Or the same name.
Maintain the same name.
So unless a board member throws out a motion during discussion, or I guess right now you can throw out a motion, unless a board member throws out a motion, we're going to continue with the process we agreed on last week?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's my understanding.
Yes.
Is everybody clear? Do we have any questions? All right then. Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the Board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by submitting a blue card to the Secretary may speak at this time. The Board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or student district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. The Board President reserves the right to limit times. And I believe these are all on the agenda item. They are. So, first is, and I apologize if I don't pronounce names correctly, Adam Adamsky on the process of filling empty board positions.
I am Adam Salam Adamsky. I was one of the 10 candidates that was interviewed. I first want to say the process was definitely unconstitutional. I have hired attorney, Mr. Feiger, to challenge whoever you choose to put a stay on that person in the federal court, the six district court, which will cost me $50,000 of my own money. This should have been done with an election in August, so the voters themselves could choose who's best qualified to sit on the Board. You six people are not qualified, so that was number one. In reference to our population here in the Dearborn schools, it is overwhelmingly Arab-American, which is hostile toward the great state of Israel. I have made a deal with Mettanahu, who's up for election tomorrow in Israel, to work with the people in Bloomfield Township, to move them here to Dearborn so we can even off all the enemies of Israel, especially the Arab-Americans in Gaza who shoot missiles to innocent people. And they just look over all day long looking for missiles coming in to Israel. So again, I think the process was not fair, was illegal, and as soon as I get the name of whoever you choose, he will file papers in the federal court tomorrow not to seat that. That person's going to have to... It's going to be an open seat until there's an election in August where the people can decide who they want in the primary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next blue card is from Daryl Donikowski on the Board vacancy.
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank you first for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Daryl Donikowski. I live at 22935 Sheridan, and I've been a resident of Dearborn for over 25 years. Unlike some who were born here, I actually chose to move to Dearborn. A couple of the reasons for that was, number one, the quality education that we do have in Dearborn. Even though I do not have children, many of my friends do. My family have people and kids who go to the Dearborn schools, and we are all proud of it as a city. I also know that that's in part because, well, other people may think otherwise, but it's due in part because we have a caring and experienced Board. And you guys, you know, you guys know what you're doing here, and that's partially because of the activism and the community involvement of everybody here in the city. To enhance that and to increase the diversity that we have, we need, and I hope you will join me and you will vote for Adel Mosib to fill the vacancy. He's proven his commitment to the schools and to the children who attend them. He has run a couple of times, but he didn't back down. He has always been here, and even when he lost barely in the last time, he's still here. He goes to read to the students. He takes an active involvement even not being on the Board. But I think including him in the Board will help with the diversity, and he'll bring new and innovative ideas to the Board and to the city and to the students. His background in IT and software is something that will be very beneficial. And the bottom line is, I think that he will be, he is the best candidate. I watched the interviews from last week. I think, you know, obviously, we have a lot of people who are committed in the city, for the city and for the students. But I think Adel rises above the others, and I hope you'll vote for him. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next one is Deena Neme for voting for candidate Mohammed Neme. I apologize if I messed that up.
Oh, no, you're fine. Deena Neme, you pronounced it correctly. So, good afternoon. My name is Deena Shwaytunemi. I'm here to proudly support my husband Mohammed Neme's candidacy for Dearborn School Board of Trustees. I know you had the opportunity to interview Mohammed and as well as the other candidates on a professional level, but I want to share some of his personal characteristics, I believe, will make him advantageous addition to the Board. So Mohammed and I are both attorneys, and though I work in a firm with over 200 of them, I can honestly say that Mohammed is the best I know, and he's passionate, hardworking, and fair. He has a true talent for approaching an issue at every angle, anticipating all potential setbacks, and crafting creative solutions accordingly. His work recently won him the Super Lawyers 2019 Rising Star Award, only presented to the top 2.5% of attorneys in Michigan. Mohammed is going to offer the Board a unique perspective, because before he was a super lawyer and an honors student in law school and in college, you may be surprised to know that Mohammed barely graduated high school. Unfortunately, like many students in our district, Mohammed struggled to be engaged in school, fell behind at an early age, and was very, very close to giving up on his education. He was not the straight A student registered in honors classes and adored by his teachers. Mohammed can speak to what contributed to his earlier struggles and how he could have prevented this. This perspective is important because we all know that success stories like Mohammed are rare. I also want you to know that Mohammed is not going to take this position lightly. We welcomed a beautiful baby girl into the world four months ago. We have some high hopes and dreams for her, and Mohammed understands that her future largely depends on her education and school experiences here in Dearborn. Since our time in school, we've noticed the tremendous strides and improvements Dearborn Public Schools have made. However, there's always more work to do and advances to be made. I know Mohammed's going to provide the most fair and well-thought-out decisions, and I really hope you vote in his favor so this community can benefit to what he has to offer. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Ayad Al Shahti on the appointment process.
Honorable Board of Trustees, good evening. My name is Ayad Al Shahti, and I stand before you today as a Dearborn resident. I stand before you as someone who has a lot of family members attending Dearborn Public Schools, and above all, I stand here as an Adel Mosib supporter. I won't talk about Adel Mosib's qualifications and background. I know there are some other members or some other candidates who apply who are qualified, and I really want to thank them for their willingness to serve our students. However, I want to talk a little bit about the process. Based on what happened in 2017 when a seat became vacant, and based on the Board discussion that took place last week, right after the interviews, it looks like there is no comprehensive system in place that guides the Board through the process of candidate selection. So, in the absence of a comprehensive system, in the absence of a policy, a procedure, in which the Board can follow when choosing a candidate, I urge you to consider an individual who ran two solid campaigns, an individual who has been advocating for our kids for the past 10 years, an individual who attended so many meetings and interviews, an individual who answered many of Dearborn residents' questions, in which thousands of Dearborn residents believed in his platform. When you're passionate about something, you make sure you make time for it. For the past two years, Adel Mosib has attended most of Dearborn Public Schools' Board meetings to learn about the issues and to learn about the process. If appointed, I have no doubts about his readiness to serve. He is ready to roll up his sleeves and get the job done on day one. Honorable Board of Trustees, last week, each candidate was asked five questions. My question is, how much can you really learn about a candidate by asking five questions? Were the five questions enough to reduce uncertainty and to appoint when appointing a candidate? Were the five questions enough to learn about their strengths and weaknesses, their visions and positions on school issues, their values and priorities? Honorable Board of Trustees, speaking of uncertainty, I can't think of anyone with less uncertainty but Adel Mosib. The whole city knows where he stands on issues. The whole city knows where his platform. The whole city knows his vision. They know because they voted for him. They know because he attended so many meetings and interviews. He knocked on 12,000 doors, yet he thought that wasn't enough. He utilized social media, went live and answered Dearborn residents' questions. Speaking of fairness, I certainly believe that Adel Mosib deserves a fair shot this Honorable Board of Trustees, let's be a city that chooses fairness this evening. Let's create a culture of voting for qualified candidates regardless of their political affiliation, the skin of their color, their names, or how they pray, because we're in this together. As I conclude, in the absence of a policy that guides the Board on the process of candidate selection, and as you make your final decision, I hope you will consider an individual who dedicated enough time to run two solid campaigns and earned over 20,000 votes. As you make your final decision, I hope you will consider the thousands of Dearborn residents who believed in him, who believed in his vision and platform. Finally, I hope you will consider the Michigan Association of School Boards' recommendation. Thank you, and may God help you make the right decision.
Thank you.
Next is Mohammed Ibrahim, excuse me, on the appointment of a new trustee.
Good evening. My name is Mohammed Ibrahim, and I'm a resident of Dearborn. I wanted to take a few minutes of your time to address a matter related to your process of choosing a new board member to replace trustee Hamud. As I was doing research about the candidates, I came across information suggesting that candidate Collette Richards was very involved in the recent campaign of trustee Roxanne McDonald. On August 8, 2018, Ms. Richards posted on Facebook information announcing that Ms. McDonald is running for school board and asking people to attend her upcoming fundraiser. Part of what she posted was, quote, "We will accept checks at the door too, and when you come, you'll get to see my smiling face." The post is actually relatively long and asks people to help in the campaign in more than one way. She also said that, quote, "We need Roxanne back on the Board." I honestly don't personally know either candidate Collette Richards or trustee Roxanne McDonald, and I don't know how close to each other they are, or how closely involved Ms. Richards was in trustee McDonald's campaign, but I am bringing this up seeking transparency and full disclosure. I am not an expert in the field to know if this is a clear conflict of interest or not. I am asking if trustee McDonald was planning on disclosing the extent of this relationship tonight before the process begins, and whether she intends on recusing herself from the process. How does the rest of the Board feel about this issue if they are aware of it? Any light you shed on this matter is welcome. I trust that each of you will make his or her choice based on qualifications and what is best for our kids and not on personal relations or political affiliation. Thank you for your time and good luck in your deliberations.
Thank you.
May I speak to that?
Yes, trustee McDonald.
One, I would like to say that I am not recusing myself from the process, and two, I'd also like to say that I do take exception to anyone thinking that a personal relationship I have with anyone would influence my judgment. My judgment is from my heart about who I think is going to serve this Board, who I've seen serve this community, who I know has a passion for education, public education, and who has worked for this position. So I take exception on somebody insinuating that I would not use my own, that I would use a personal interest to make that decision. I absolutely take exception to that.
And let me explain the Conflict of Interest laws. If there's not a financial component to this, then there's not a reason to recuse yourself. This conflict is only in the fact that many of us know many of the candidates over the years of being, living in this community. But the fact is, is that Roxanne McDonald would not benefit financially from any appointment of any other board member unless they were living in her household, and that's not what's occurring at this time. So just to answer that question, I believe our legal counsel could address that so that we can clear this up now. I don't want to leave that lingering.
The Board actually has policy on conflicts of interest. It's number 144.3, and, Madam President, you are correct, requires a cuneary interest in a contract where the money's actually coming from the district to the person, where they would be disqualified. Specifically, which would have to have is a 5% ownership in a company, or 5% or more of the contract costs that the district is paying. For example, if I owned a lawn maintenance company and the district hired me to cut the football fields, that would be a cuneary interest. Somebody working for a candidate running for public office, none of the district's money goes to those individuals. You certainly have free to work on anybody's candidacy that you wish, and take such volunteer positions as you wish.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Courier.
One more thing that I'd like to add to that, too, is all of us are elected officials sitting at this table, and I'm sure all of us know a tremendous amount of people who are politically engaged and politically active in the community. So I'm sure that we have a lot of dealings with people in the community, people that may have made some phone calls for us or done any number of things for a position that we've run. Many of us have run more than one campaign. So I just wanted to say that I am probably not the only one that has had someone who has applied for a position also had some kind of interest in their campaign or some kind of helping hand in their campaign.
Thank you. Okay, trustee Thorpe.
One thing I'll add to that is that it's tough in these positions because we usually do know more than one candidate.
Absolutely.
And you're having to choose just one. And we don't necessarily want to hurt anyone's feelings, but we want to put the person that we feel will be best in the seat.
Thank you. And I would like you all to hold your criticisms until you find out what the decision is, rather than jumping to a conclusion before you've even heard the positions that we are going to take. Thank you. Next.
Tarek Al Hadri on the appointment.
Good evening. My name is Darul Hadri. 7854. I'm not even sure.
Oh, you don't need to know. This isn't city council.
Got it. Good evening. I hope you're all doing well. We're all here in order to come together to get a new board seat member. Although Adel sat through the interview process and answered your five questions, which personally I don't think is enough, he has answered thousands of questions from the constituents of the city. To be exact, 11,191 the first time and 9,517 the second time, and the second time was during a primary. Altogether, it's 20,707 votes. Even though it was a close call both times, he never just disappeared and was still an active member of this community and of this... That says something about his character, and that's why I believe it's him who belongs in that seat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mansour Sharha on the special Board nomination for the vacant seat.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Respected trustees and community members, I truly appreciate this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Mansour Sharha. I'm actually Vice President of the ICD, the Islamic Center of Detroit on Tarman. That's a volunteer position, so I understand what to be and how long it takes and what it takes to be a board member and a volunteer position. But I'm here to really, A, thank you for your commitment, dedication, and effort that you have done for our schools within the City of Dearborn. I'm a Dearborn resident. My son actually is a high school... My son actually is a high school student in Etzel Ford, and we're proud to be Dearborn residents. I'm here to really speak for and support Adel Mozib. He's actually one of the qualified candidates that I have personally got to know for fifteen years. This is not new to me or to the people that you have heard from before me. Adel, in fact, worked with me on the Digital Connect that was part of Comcast and Cisco program to really educate, develop, and build young leaders within the community. And believe it or not, one of the results of this program, we now have eight students that attended this program are now in medical schools. All of the eight students are now part of medical school, and one of them actually is attending here. At a professional level, I'm a faculty member and also a senior technical program manager, so professionally, I have known Adel as well from a professional level. We work together in a lot of different initiatives. What I would like to really leave you with, because I don't want to repeat what others have said, something that I just read over the weekend from John Maxwell, who is the bestseller and author in Leadership and Management. One of his books titled "What Successful People Know About Leadership," page 72, he said, "When you identify a motivated individual, the individual must have the following four traits. One, they exhibit a positive attitude. Two, they can articulate specifically a goal for their life and achieve that goal. Three, they are initiators. Four, they have a proven track record of success." And I personally believe, among other members that attended here from the community, Adel do exhibit these four traits. So I kindly ask that you consider him for the new appointment and have a fair assessment of the candidates. And I also did attend the interview last week, and I watched all the candidates going through the questions. Again, thank you for your time, and good luck with the process tonight.
Thank you.